And I think we have a quorum. Shall we start? Matt, are you ready?
Yes.
Welcome, welcome to this public meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. The board is an elected unpaid group of ten citizens who set policy and make decisions on educational, financial, and personnel matters for the Princeton Public Schools on behalf of all residents. We are always pleased when members of the community attend our meetings. The board and the school district operate under applicable New Jersey laws and under regulations of the New Jersey State Board of Education. Each meeting includes an opportunity for those attending to comment on items on the published agenda or other matters of interest to them. The board reserves the right to limit the time allotted to public participation. Law limits discussion of individual personnel and confidential matters. We desire that our meetings provide useful opportunities for communication between the board and the community, so thank you for attending.
As required under the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 1046 at sequencha, adequate notice was given for calling this meeting. It was authorized by the Board of Education and forwarded to the municipal clerk Princeton Packet and the Times on January 6, 2021, and distributed to the schools and others on the standard commission list. The board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. Board policy 2230 recording devices requires that we inform those attending this virtual Zoom meeting that the proceedings are being recorded. This meeting is not being livestreamed. Public members who wish to make comment at the appropriate time as noticed on the agenda or added by the presiding officer shall raise their hand virtually at the bottom of the Zoom screen. Once called upon, the members of the public will be requested to unmute themselves by clicking the mute button at the bottom of the Zoom screen. A representative of the sending district is authorized to vote on such matters that affect sending district students or affect the governance of the Princeton Public Schools as more specifically designated in NJSA 18A 388.1. In the event the statute is amended, the law shall take precedence over this bylaw. Sending district votes pertaining to personnel actions refer to high school, central administrative, and district-wide staff only. Votes otherwise are considered abstentions.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden. Would you call the roll?
Beth Barron.
Present.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Here.
Dan Dart.
Here.
Betsy Bagwell.
Here.
Brian McDonald.
Present.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder.
Present.
Peter Katz.
Here.
Daphne Kendall.
Here.
Susan Cantor.
Yeah.
Jean Durbin.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I'm calling the public meeting to order, and I notice I'm noting upfront that Dr. Galasso is not with us this evening. He has a medical matter that he's taking care of, and Dr. Ginsburg is going to be filling it in his place. So, thank you, Dr. Ginsburg, for that tonight. Appreciate it. The first item of business on our agenda is item D1, adoption of minutes from the January 5, 2021 meeting. Could I have a motion? Brian, second. Michelle, any discussion? If not, could we please call a roll to approve?
Beth Barron.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Dan Dart.
Yes.
Betsy Bagwell.
Yes.
Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder.
Yes.
Peter Katz.
Yes.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Jean Durbin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The next item is our item E, public forum, the first one of the evening. We invite the members of the public to raise their hand, and Mr. Bolden will call on you. We ask that you state your name and address, that you keep your comments to three minutes. It is not a discussion between the board and the public. We will listen carefully to what you have to say, and we look forward to hearing from our public. So, if you would raise your hand at this time?
Rod Montgomery.
And I don't know whether, well, okay.
We hear.
Opportunity to address you. Social Justice Warriors. A Princeton High School news item dated 10 December 2020 quotes the principal of PHS describing the students who have taken the school's racial literacy course. Quote, "We call them social justice warriors. Nobody leaves the course as they enter it. They want to do more," end quote. Social justice warriors. Warriors. What's a warrior? A warrior is someone who makes war. It's right there in the word. What's war? The definition the U.S. Marines use is as good as any. From Fleet Marine Force Manual 1, Warfighting, quote, "The essence of war is a violent struggle between two hostile, independent, and irreconcilable wills, each trying to impose itself on the other," end quote. Wow. Your racial literacy course is turning students into people who do that. Upon whom are your social justice warriors going to make war? Social justice war would be between the oppressed and the oppressors, or, in the terminology your textbook uses, the dominators and the dominated. The title of the first edition of the textbook was racial domination. Who are the oppressors? White people are oppressors. Male heterosexuals are oppressors. Christians in general, and especially Roman Catholics, are oppressors. In other words, people like me are the oppressors against whom you are teaching your students to engage in a violent clash of interests, trying to impose their will on us. Personally, I'd rather you were preparing your students to understand people whose views differ from their own, rather than to impose their will on us violently. God bless the United States of America. God bless the state of New Jersey, and God bless the Princeton Public Schools. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Is there anyone else out there that would like to speak? Beth, I'm not seeing anyone else out there.
Okay, we'll move on to the student board members' report. We have Yash Roy and Maya Khan with us this evening, if you'd like to give your report.
Hi. Thank you for having us. So, as this is the beginning of the new year, mine, I just want to rehash over some of the goals and reasons why we are in this position. The, we did talk about bringing you all a survey the last time we met, but given the transition that is taking place at our high school right now with Ms. Baxter leaving and the new administration, we're going to hold off and kind of bring that to you the next time we meet. So, today, we just want to talk a bit about kind of the anecdotal experience of students as first semester is coming to an end at the beginning of next week. So, we just want to talk a little bit about student wellness, mental health, and just how students are doing overall. So. So, one of the biggest things that in the last month we've been dealing with is the schedule is throwing a lot of students, including myself, for a bit of a loop because of the different timings that are taking place in the last two weeks. I think we've had starts at 8:20, 9:20, which is proving to be problematic for a lot of students and something going forward. I've heard from a lot of my peers, they would, they're pleading with the administration, with the board to create a more standardized and regular schedule that we're used to if you were in person, just so that our workload and the way we work can go forward efficiently. And the second thing is just a lot of students, and this is something mine and I are working with, Ms. Ligas, with Dr. Donovan, and in the coming days, Mr. Warren, just dealing with the mental health struggles that many students are dealing with during this pandemic, as we're now coming in about a year of lockdown. The toll is significant for a lot of students, especially upperclassmen who have had to deal with college applications, standardized testing on all these things. And so, something that we want to bring up to all of you, that students do feel very overworked, overstressed right now, and something that mine and I and all Student Council look forward to working with you and within our own school to help mitigate as second semester begins. And yes, and then the final thing is just a more personal thing from I and I, we've been participating in the racial justice task force for, with Ms. Baxter, and now moving forward, I believe it's going to be with Ms. Ligas and Ms. Burge, and that's the reports and information that we learned from that to make our schools more open, more accessible, working with teachers like Dr. BJ, who is also our racial justice course teacher. We look forward to bring you that more information and helping to make sure that all voices and all perspectives are represented at PHS, which I think in the last month, we can agree is incredibly important, that our students learn how important tolerance and respect is. So, yes, moving it on to Maya.
Hello, everyone. Yash pretty much covered all bases. I'd like to add to what he just last talked about. We're working a lot of projects to bring a platform for many student activists with social justice clubs to share their clubs with more members, and we look forward to having a day of activism and continuing to do so because we've heard a lot of feedback from students that they really enjoy those and like to be in an environment that supports an open community. So, I think that's it for us.
Thank you, Yash. Thank you, Maya. And we do look forward to that survey when you're able to do it, and we do appreciate hearing from you on how our students are doing and hearing your voice. Daphna?
Um, thank you for your report, Maya and Yash. I had a question about the start time at the high school, and I was wondering with the new schedule that will take effect next week, does that resolve some of the issues?
Is the new schedule, you mean, the starting at the hybrid schedule, the 8:20 schedule? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
The thing has been, right? That's been the schedule that we've had since, I believe, November, the 8:20 start time. The issue is that because of quarantines and because everything that's been going on, we keep jumping between like a week and a half of 8:20 starts, and then something, something unforeseen happens, and we jump to 9:20, and then we jump back. And then now our Fridays, regardless of the 8:20 start, is starting at nine o'clock. So, it's just like, it's the original, like the schedule, I don't fault anyone in this, really. It's just a pandemic is so crazy in the way it's acting that like we're having these different start times. So, hopefully, I'm hoping that once this 8:20 start time starts, it can continue throughout the rest of the year without us having to switch to virtual. So, if that doesn't happen, then that can probably alleviate a lot of the issues that students have been facing.
Thank you.
Thank you both. For those of us who have high school students, we also are experiencing the similar confusion about start times. It's difficult.
Beth, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Thank you so much to our students. We really do appreciate you being here. You mentioned student stress and mental health and mental wellness. It's something we are quite concerned about as a board. Is that something you look to address in your survey? Specifically, do all students, even though some are remote and some are in school, do they still feel a connection to adults if they need help? So, is that something you're looking to measure?
Our survey is very much, we're looking at it as kind of a report card. Ms. Barron and Ms. Kendall, you were with us to look at the Stanford survey about two or three weeks ago. That data isn't completely, I feel like, considering the world, the word right now isn't completely accurate. So, Maya and I are treating the survey as an opportunity to kind of look into exactly student stress, the workload, balancing it with clubs, balancing it with whether or not they have access to adults, they feel welcome, so they're just touching all those spaces.
Thank you for your work.
Any other questions? If not, I'll just move on quickly into the, my own board president report. I want to thank everyone for joining us tonight. It's, we continue obviously to soldier on through this crisis and through the changes that we have every week. We hear from the students, we know from our teachers, we know from our staff. It's very challenging for everyone. Just to let you know that the Board of Education, it's a very busy time for us in the year. We have reorganized ourselves in the, in the last week, and for the public's information, we have our new committee structures, and that is attached to the agenda to this meeting. You can see who's on the committees this, this year, moving forward for 2021. And we did make one change in that we consolidated our Finance and Facilities Committee into an Operations Committee in an effort to be more effective with our, our time and with our administrators' time. And so, we hope that that will help us be more efficient and effective, and we will see how that goes, but we can't know till we try, and we think that that might be a positive move forward. So, you can see those lists on the agenda. I'll also say this is our fourth meeting of the week, and we do thank our administrators who are with us for almost all of these sessions. It's a lot of time for everyone. I thank my colleagues, but you know, our administrators also are working all day long and join us for these meetings. We are still engaged very much in the superintendent search and look forward to being able to give more news on that soon. We are preparing for our negotiation cycle, which is something that we are almost always in the, in the cycle of, but we're, we're working on that again. We're working on our budget, and we will have next Tuesday, a preliminary budget meeting for the board to work on basic parameters, and then the following Tuesday, so Tuesday, February 9th is our board, our first budget hearing for the public at 7:00 PM. So, there's a lot of meetings that we are doing, and we also then would like to, as we do every month now, express some gratitude, and I'm expressing gratitude to my colleagues and to our senior administrators for all the work, as I said, in connection with our reorganization. I think Ms. Kendall would like to also say a word.
Sure. Thanks, Beth. So, we're taking this over from our former colleague Jess, and I'm sure over the course of the year, we'll all have a chance to express our gratitude. So, today, I'm going to share that we are very grateful to our teachers and support staff for their commitment to our students and their professionalism as the pandemic continues. We are fortunate that we haven't had to close schools because we couldn't staff our buildings, and this has happened in other communities. Today, in the Journal of American, in the Journal of the American Medical Association, researchers from the CDC published a viewpoint piece that concluded that there has been little evidence that schools have contributed, contributed meaningfully to increased community transmission, and that with proper prevention efforts, transmissions in schools can be kept low. Prevention efforts recommended by the CDC include requiring masks, allowing for a distance of six feet between people, and keeping students in cohorts to limit the number of people who must quarantine in the event of an exposure. All these prevention efforts have been implemented in the Princeton Public Schools, but when we began the school year with these measures, it wasn't yet clear how effective these prevention efforts would be. And our teachers showed up. So, there's light at the end of the tunnel, and as the pandemic recedes, we will remain forever grateful to our staff for all they have done for our students.
Thank you, Ms. Kendall, and Ms. Cantor, I think you had something as well.
Yeah, I'd like to express our gratitude in terms of the referendum projects that we've been working on. Our principals, administrators, staff, teachers, and custodial staff have been so flexible in both their efforts to see it to completion, and we're excited that Princeton High School will, is just starting some of the more significant work in their schools. We wanted to say a special gratitude to those in the guidance, the special ed department and physical education departments, because I know that their space has already started to be worked on, and we really appreciate everyone's flexibility in terms of both moving to where, to new locations and to be able to adjust so quickly on the fly. A special shout out, we always want to thank, and I think we're going to see later, the Pums community, who's been working through their referendum, and we're going to see some evidence of that, but they are working through their punch lists, so we're grateful to them and our elementary schools, and always a special shout out to Matt and Dave, who every day takes such detailed efforts to make sure that our referendum is continuing in a safe and direct manner. So, thank you to all who continue to help us make this district better.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Dr. Ginsburg, would you like to move on with the superintendent's report?
Sure. First, a shout out to Barry Galasso. He's doing well. He'll be working from home the rest of this week, and then he'll be back with us Monday, and we're glad he's doing well. The first item is that, starting on January 9th, and it relates to something that Daphna just said, we brought back all of our kindergartners and first graders whose parents wanted them to come back for four days instead of two, with the support of and the approval of our health officers from the community, from the township. We've combined cohorts A and B, so the children come in four days a week, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. And we did that with some creative maneuvering by the principals and teachers in terms of finding space so that we could bring the kids back still masked and still six feet apart. And Matt, if you can show us part of a video that some of the teachers at CP made to share with their parents, that would give the community a sense of what's going on.
Do that right now.
My name is Katie Nash, and I'm a kindergarten teacher at Community Park School. Recently, we switched my classroom so that all of our students can appropriately come to school and social distance. So, I'm going to take you through what we did. I'm going to be located in the cafeteria, so the biggest thing was I wanted my students to feel comfortable in the environment and feel just like it is our classroom. So, I brought down some of the things from our actual classroom. And I have our bulletin board that was outside, as well as some of the work that students created in the beginning of the year for our All About Me unit. So, that's the first thing they're going to see when they enter our classroom. Let's go take a look inside. The cafeteria is definitely a big space, and my students had never been in the cafeteria before, so I wanted to make sure that although we're in a big space, they felt comfortable and safe in our classroom environment. So, my goal was to be able to recreate our classroom in the cafeteria. There were lots of big empty walls, so I put some of our curriculum materials on the wall. Some of these are far away from students all the way over, so they do have these resources in their folders and binders as well. You'll notice all of our tables are six feet apart, and they are marked with little vinyl pieces so that it's easy for the kids to remember exactly where to sit. When I told my students we were switching classrooms and going to the cafeteria, one of my students asked if our colored pineapples were making it down to the cafeteria as well, so I made sure to bring them here, and the little things are the things that the students notice. So, I wanted to make sure that they saw those things represented in our new classroom. You'll notice all of our students have their materials. We use individual bins so that students are not sharing materials, so all of that was brought down as well. I wanted to also make sure we have room to display student work, so I made some makeshift bulletin boards up on the side of the wall over there, which will soon be filled with student creations. And we also brought down some of our classroom books and materials that students will frequently be using. I am an English language arts teacher in our dual language immersion program, so this is a big chunk of the materials that we will be using. And one of the benefits of being in the cafeteria that we didn't have in our classroom is because we have so much space, we're actually able to move onto the floor. And so, one of the big things that's really important for these little ones is to be moving around. So, not only will students have their own individual spot at a table, they'll also be able to come to the floor. There's different markings on the floor that are six feet apart, so we're able to do morning meetings, and we're also able to do read alouds with some individual cushions that can all be. So, our students will be here extremely soon. We're really excited, and I can't wait for them to be able to see our new classroom.
Thank you, Matt. So, we've received across all four schools tremendous feedback in terms of very positive responses from parents. The only complaints we've received are mostly from second grade parents who'd like us to do this for the second graders now. So, we appreciate the administrators and the teachers who've really gone out of their way to ensure that we can make a successful return for, among our most vulnerable kids are our youngest youngsters. We've also, we can't do it for the old, for the rest of the grades, because we just don't have spaces big enough to accommodate the kids, but we have invited back individual youngsters in various grades who we think need the four days the most in terms of their ability to thrive and do work. So, we have not only limited it to K's and ones, but to other youngsters as well. And we're looking, right now at the high school, we have about 70% of the students are on remote learning, and about 30% are coming in for hybrid learning, and that's similar. I was at a meeting last week with all the, my peers from all the other Mercer County districts, and that's about what all the high schools are running across Mercer County, those who are actually open. But that means we have very few high school youngsters in, in some of the classes. So, Jared Warren and his team are looking at the possibility in the next week or two of combining cohorts A and B at the high school and bringing those students back instead of every other week, having them come back every week, four days a week, every week, instead of four days a week, every other week. So, that's something for us to look forward to. We can't do that at the middle school because we have, there we have about 70% of the kids still coming to school, and we just don't have enough large spaces to accommodate them. So, that was the first thing. The second thing is today, the high school administered over 300 PSATs, preliminary scholastic aptitude test, to our 11th graders, which is for, helps them with scholarships and other things, and that meant the rest of the high school was on remote learning, but we were able to administer over 300 tests to kids with masks, socially distanced and so forth, and they're on their way to, with FedEx, to go wherever they have to go to be scored. So, we thank the high school teachers, the high school counselors and the administrators, administrators for putting that together. The third thing is tomorrow, and on Thursday, we're going to be holding two forums, the first of a bunch of curriculum forums we'll be holding for the district and for the community. Tomorrow at 4:00 PM, we'll have a secondary school, meaning middle school and high school math forum at 4:00 PM, and then on Thursday, we'll be having one for the elementary schools also at 4:00 PM. If you would like to attend, it's open to everybody. You can check with your PTO presidents, or you can check with the curriculum office for the link that you'll need to attend. We're not putting the link out there just because we want to maintain security in terms of not having people come who will disrupt the meeting. So, that's how you can get ahold of that. The fourth item that Barry would like me to report about is we sent out a survey about a week ago to our pre-K to five parents. We have about 500 responses already. Tomorrow's the last day, and among the things that we're looking at are some of the things that folks have raised, and that is, there's a whole section on how the kids are adapting and social emotional growth and learning and so forth. So, we're hoping that parents will complete that and send it in to us by tomorrow. And the questions are phrased in such a way that the information we get back will be helpful for us to improve our hybrid, our in-person and our remote learning for the next few months, for as long as we have to continue them. So, we thank everybody who has responding, responded. The survey is also in Spanish for folks who want to feel more comfortable responding that way. And we're looking possibly by next week to get out a similar survey for our secondary students and their parents as well. We'll also likely run some focus groups for secondary students so they can give us their voice directly on things that are working and things they'd like us to address. So, for what Yash and Maya were talking about, that's another way that we can ensure that we're trying to address everybody's needs. And the fifth thing is. And the fifth thing is Susan just recently mentioned about the referendum. We want to give you an update on the referendum. So Matt, if you can show us the video of another one of the improvements that we've done, that would be helpful to us. Thank you.
This is our brand new innovation lab and a lot of careful thought and time was put into the planning and we can't wait to unveil it for everybody to see. In the meantime, I hope that you, you're enjoying this preview of this space that we think will be very important. So you are focused right now on what is the focal point of our room. And this blue circle that you see, I'm hoping will be the future home of our school student television broadcast journalism class. So the key word to focus on is flexibility. The rooms are flexible because the walls are flexible. And as you can also tell, the tables are flexible. Of course, right now, we have to be very careful about social distancing. But this is built to be a collaborative space. And as you can see, the tables fit together in interesting ways to encourage that togetherness and that collaboration. But the room can be made to be what you need it to be on any given day. Two years ago, when Tim Charleston and I started drawing this up, thinking about what it could be. The initial idea was to bring our robotics teacher, our coding teacher, our technology teacher, Kelly Riley, all together and make them all co-teach in this space, which would then increase the functional capacity of the building, freeing up, you know, another four to five additional classrooms. And then at the heart of the school, you would put STEM, science, engineering, math, right at the hub of the building. I remind everybody, when we had the great renovation of our old gym into a brand new learning commons, this, that spot and this spot were thought about as 1A and 1B. And what I think we've done now is we've designed a space that teachers can use, they can collaborate, the kids can come together on projects and it truly will function like a 1A and a 1B.
And this is the new nurses suite.
And you can see that a parent who needed to come up and pick an ill child up from school, you would talk, you would first check in at the desk. You, the building monitor would assist you, you would enter right into this space from that space. And again, we're highlighting the fact that you have much more ability to get what you need quickly and securely.
So that's the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Nice video. Okay, that takes us on our agenda to I-1. I think we're going to be putting off the HIB this week. We didn't talk about it in closed yet. Maybe push that to next week. And then we come to our board committee reports. And that would be, first off, I don't know how we want to do this this week. We haven't necessarily had all of our committees meet, but I'll just go through the list and you can just pass if you don't have something to say. Equity, I think we passed, we don't have an equity report. Facilities.
I think we did meet, I think we have some things on the agenda that Matt will present coming up. But we discussed how the elementary projects were almost complete. The middle school, we're just finishing the punch list and the beginning of our high school referendum projects as well as future considerations on projects concerning sustainability. So, and how some of our future projects would fit into our budgeting coming up in the spring.
Okay, thank you. Finance, Mr. McDonald?
Sure, thanks. I will not be as brief as Susan, but I will limit myself to four highlights. The first is to note that the board will be asked to approve the annual CAFR, C-A-F-R, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report that runs to 143 pages and it is surprisingly robust and informative reading. And also the AMR, the Auditor's Management Report, which is 15 pages long. In December, I think we reported on this before, we, the finance committee met with the auditors, but this is the meeting where the full board approves those two documents. They, the, they come with the recommendation of unanimous recommendation of the finance committee and gratitude to Matt and his team. There were zero recommendations for changes or improvements, a totally clean opinion, and that is good news. So thank you, Matt, and thank you to your team. Second topic, we received an update on expenses related to operating during the pandemic. And Matt shared a spreadsheet that showed a decrease in net expenses of $131,000 from December. This is because some of the items that we had spent money on were reimbursed through the second round of the CARES Act and one other relief fund. Two other notes, Matt will continue to look and see where there are savings. We believe there may be some savings in supplies, other purchases, possibly transportation, which could further reduce that net expense cost. And then we are very hopeful that Congress will approve a new round of stimulus. And there seems to be hope bordering on some confidence that education will be a major focus of that stimulus, which could further reduce the net outlays that we have had. So all of that is, I think, good news in that it's reducing our net expenses. The third thing, which the board will be asked to approve later is an extension of the contract with Epic, our construction manager. And that would be extending their work through September 30, 2021 at a cost of about $123,000. There were a lot of moving parts when our interim business administrator was transitioning to Matt. And by that time, we had already extended the referendum schedule. We just didn't catch the fact that the Epic contract that was approved terminated before the new end of the referendum. The good news is that Matt and Dave Harding have been very efficient with Epic. And so that number is, while it's large, it's not as large as it, as it might have been. And that also comes with the recommendation of the committee. The fourth thing is that we, the committee authorized or is recommending that the board authorize the issuance of bids for additional HVAC equipment, building management systems or, you know, building control systems that should help us save energy and repair costs. And a new HVAC and dehumidification unit for the pool at Pums. And that, some, some work on our roofs, which are leaking and require repair on an emergent basis. Lastly, repairs to one of the two chillers at the high school that is responsible for cooling in the warmer months. The total of that work could total as much as $2 million. What the board is being asked to do today, again, at the recommendation of the finance committee, is to authorize the bids. We are not authorizing the work. That would happen in the future. And several members of the finance committee have asked for additional information, which will be furnished to us in advance of consideration of making any awards. I'll stop there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. McDonald? If not, then we are Personnel, Ms. Bronfeld?
Yep. Personnel met on January 12th. The PHS principal search is underway and the goal is to hire a permanent principal by the beginning of next school year. The PPS nurses will be assisting the Princeton Health Department in administering vaccines. And this is really good news because this way our nurses will also be trained when the vaccines are available to our staff. We will be approving tonight two updated job descriptions. They're not new jobs, but just making them better for the entire district. One is a bilingual technology and the other is an assistant and human resource generalist. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, we are on to, I think we do not have a policy report. And we were on to student achievement. Ms. Baglio?
Thank you very much. Student achievement actually met twice since our last December meeting. So we will keep this brief, but we have two meetings to update you on. The meetings were open to the public. I was actually unable to attend the December meeting, so I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Daphna Kendall, who chaired that meeting in my place to provide a quick report.
Okay, thanks, Betsy. So the student achievement committee met on December 18th. The first item for discussion were changes to the program of studies for the 2021 to 2022 academic year. Some quick highlights, the Big Brother Big Sister Program will be changed to Mindful Mentors. This course will be open to seniors only. The course trains selected seniors to serve as peer resources and educators for other students. The student leaders are selected through an application and interview process during the spring of their junior year. A new course has been added for math. It's iOS app development class. Students will learn to code iOS apps while learning the basics of Swift, Xcode and object oriented programming. For science, research, there's a new course description pending. And bioethics has been removed from the course of studies as there's a similar research program. For entering freshmen, the class of 2025, there've been some changes to the visual and performing arts requirements. English Plus is now a new offering. New curriculum will allow for a greater in-depth discussion. Journalism and public speaking will count towards 21st century skills credit. The next topic the committee discussed was the new racial literacy course, Pearl, which is online. Pearl stands for Princeton Introduction to Racial Literacy. 100 students, Ms. Baxter and Dr. Donovan presented on this. 100 students have been enrolled in the class in January and an additional 100 students will take the class in March. Students have six weeks to complete the course, which is about eight hours of coursework. An exciting development, this course is now a graduation requirement for the class of 2025 and beyond. This course will also be a requirement for all students who wish to participate in curricular and co-curricular leadership opportunities, such as Team PEP, peer group, mindful mentors, clubs, sports, performing arts, et cetera. And this began the 2021 to 22 school year. This is an introductory class for PHS students in grades nine through 12 as part of a broader continuum of teaching and learning goals to embrace multicultural education and transformative school culture. There will be three cohorts throughout the school year. The committee, and just to keep it brief, we had an update about technology and Dr. Donovan provided an update on counseling initiatives throughout the district.
Thank, thank you so much. And let me just say, I've spent four years as the SAC chair and I must say I'm incredibly pleased to be transitioning the leadership of this committee to Daphna Kendall. So thank you, Daphna, for, for taking this on. We also met last Friday, January 22nd. We had a few people come to our meeting to update us on a number of topics. Keisha Smith Carrington talked to us, with us about the schooling classroom multicultural libraries and the work, the hard work of our library media specialists, especially at the elementary school, but the work is extending to the middle school now as well. So that's exciting. There will be a community-wide African-American read-in in collaboration with the Princeton Public Library. Keisha said to stay tuned on that and that will, more information will come out about that. Stephanie DeCarlo, one of the assistant principals at the middle school, attended to speak about a survey that the Princeton Unified Middle School has been asked to participate in. Dr. Ginsberg updated us on the pre-K to five parent survey that he just mentioned in his report. We're eager to hear of that data. Dr. Ginsberg also talked about some new changes to the guidelines of program and curricular reviews and as well as textbook and instructional material approvals. And then we talked briefly about the calendar for SAC going forward. So the next student achievement meeting is scheduled for Friday, February 19th. And I look forward to continuing the work of this committee with Daphna and our colleagues. The times for our 2021 meetings have not been set, but they will be listed on the website. As always, the public is invited and encouraged to attend public SAC meetings. And the Zoom meeting details and agenda and documents will be posted to the website prior to the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? If none, negotiations, I don't know that we have a report this week. No. That brings us to item K1. We're on to our policy section. I believe that these are all consent items. So I'm going to just ask if I have any questions. Debbie?
Yeah, so I don't think first reading was on there before, right? Was this added? So which is why I'm bringing my comment now.
Yes, thank you. I'm just looking at this. I lost.
I didn't think that was there. So I was wondering under B, the committee chairperson and members will be appointed by the board president and vice president. I was wondering if we could add vice president, in part because of kind of how we did it this year. So, and I would have emailed that, but I didn't see this before.
So let's just back up a minute. We have the, on for first read tonight, we put on the committee bylaw, Matt, right? And what changes did you make to that simply to reflect the fact that we have an operations committee rather than the finance and facilities, correct? You're on mute.
Yes, that is correct.
So we hadn't contemplated any other changes to this, this, and we haven't discussed it in committee or anything. So that was the only change for tonight. So I think Ms. Bronfeld is making a motion to, for the first read to make a change. So are we, do we do that by emotion, Matt, or what, what should we do? Oh, Michelle, can you help, please?
No, I can't help because I'm confused too. That, I was looking for some more clarity from, from Debbie as to what it is she wants this to say.
Oh, so on B, the committee chairperson and members shall be appointed by the board president and vice president.
I move to table the motion as something we can take up in the policy committee. And for tonight, in order to have our committee structure adequately reflect where we are, move this forward as amended.
Second.
We have a second. And then we would vote on the motion to table. Is there any question?
If we table this, Debbie's suggestion, it will be added to the policy committee agenda for your next meeting? Okay.
Okay, okay. Because yeah, it wasn't there, so I didn't get a chance to.
Yeah, it was the last, right. We haven't had time to talk. So that's, that's.
Yeah, I think that's a good.
Good idea.
Do you want to withdraw your motion or your amendment? What does that mean if I withdraw?
We're just going to do this as part of the consent. So the committee said they will take this.
You didn't make a motion.
Okay, because then.
And it wasn't seconded. So she doesn't have to withdraw it. She doesn't have to do anything.
But then what was Jean's motion?
Well, that, Jean moved to table, but Debbie never moved and it was never seconded. So, so really, nobody has to do anything. Keep it moving. The committee's already agreed to take it up unless you want to formalize it. Debbie, if you're more comfortable with that, then you make a motion, somebody's like, okay, you're good. All right.
Okay, so we can just keep going and it's in the consent as a first, but we'll go to committee with it before it comes back as a second.
I think it's on for a second.
No, no, it's on for first. Oh, it's on for first and second.
Oh, first and second to reflect our, our committee structure as we've changed it. And.
I think Peter, Peter.
Oh, I didn't see it.
Debbie's asking for something different than what it's on for, right? I mean, all we're doing here is just saying we have different committees than what we had bylaws for. I think the committee. I think the committee has now agreed that we'll take up the other aspects of this policy. We can bring it back for a first reading on those other issues. But this is for a very discreet purpose, and I think it makes sense for us to do that first, second, together, because we've changed our committee structure. So we can do the other one separately, and I think everyone's happy to do that. But let's, I think it makes sense to move forward as written now.
Thank you, Peter. Okay, we're all right to do that, then? We'll be changing just the language to reflect the accurate, the new, the new committee structure. And then we'll come back to this after having it considered by policy. Thank you. Thank you, Debbie, for that, too, that question. Okay, and then policies for second reading. Again, this is a consent item. Any questions about those? Okay, then we go, and I'm going to, again, I'm going to read the titles like I normally do. And if you want to stop me to discuss, just wave your hands. L one is resolution to create new positions. L two, appointments twenty twenty to twenty-one. L three, transfer reassignments. L four, personnel items. L five, resignation. L six, guide movement. L seven, substitute appointments. L eight, job descriptions. L nine, student services. L ten, leaves of absence. L eleven, tuition reimbursements. L twelve, E P S, winter sports, and sidebar. Then we go to M one, educational placement. M two, educational placement. M three, professional consulting. M four, commission for the blind. M five, educational placement. M six, professional consulting. M seven, special education agreement. And one, the annual audit. And two is the financial reports. And three, professional services, E U S, health insurance broker. And four, bid authorization. We discuss that in the committee reports.
That's an action.
That's an action item. Okay, so let's stop there. Can I have a motion for the bid authorization? Brian, a second. Peter? Any discussion? Could we call a roll, please?
Matt, can I just ask a quick question? Matt, Brian mentioned this, we're about two million dollars. Where do you expect the funding source to be for those projects?
Mostly capital reserves, some maintenance reserve, and some of the lesser items would come out of the operating budget. Chiller repair would likely come out of the operating budget, although it would be, it looks like it's going to be over the forty-four thousand dollar bid threshold.
Thank you.
Mostly capital reserve, some maintenance reserve, and operating budget.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Bolden, do you want to call the roll? And again, we are approving that, an authorization of the Business Administrator to prepare advertisements and advertise for and receive bids for the PHS roof replacements and repairs, the PHS chiller, the HVAC building management system controls, the Pums pool HVAC system, and additional HVAC units not included in referendum at Pums and elementary schools. And again, this is for going out for bid. This is not to approve a project. Would you like to call a roll on that?
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Betsy Baglio?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder?
Yes.
Peter Katz?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Susan Kanter?
Yes.
Jean Durbin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Beth, can I just ask a question?
Yes.
I don't know if this is appropriate, but as Dan noted, you know, when the bids come back, it's potentially a very large expenditure. I believe the bid window is likely to be longer than the interval between this meeting and our next meeting. And if it's possible, I think that it might be a good idea for the full board and the public to be able to hear a bit more about each of those projects and be able to deliberate before the meeting where we're asked to approve.
I, yes. Matt, would that be something that we can do? I mean, when we go out for bid, how long do we have when we go out for bid? What is the timeframe?
Well, that's ten, ten days for straight public works, construction bids, ten days. But typically, we do, depending on the complexity of the projects, these aren't, you know, we're not constructing a school or a major addition, like what's going on with the high school, you know, with some of the referendum projects. You can leave a little more time typically to allow for walkthroughs and then, sorry, addendums. So if there was a walkthrough needed on a particular project, then you have to revise the specs. You have seven more days to, you have to extend. So typically, ten is too tight of a window. So we have to, first of all, I have to get the bids together. The technical specs are not done on all of these yet. So it will, but we do want to award by March. Typically, for additional HVAC, as we know the lead time on the equipment, you know, that's about the last time we'd want to do it. If we remember back to the beginning of the two thousand eighteen referendum, the first project, we bought AireDales off of a co-op, and sometimes, in that particular case, we paid a little premium as opposed to bidding the equipment, so.
So we're trying to get bids. If we were to do these projects, we would like to have them done this summer. So we will be looking at getting bids and then approving contracts in a timeframe to allow us to do that. So if we can back that up, and as Brian asked, I hope that we can have a public discussion with the board, and so we can all have more information on those before we are deciding. Thank you.
I'm sorry, can I ask that we get some information on the health and safety issues that are associated with the pool ventilation? I know it's a large number, but I don't know much about the project, but I do know that you can smell the pool in the cafeteria at JW, so that's got to be a health and safety issue. So I'd just like to know, you know, I don't know, because anyone has done air quality testing at the school, but, you know, that's a serious issue, and I'm glad that we're looking at it. And, and I hope it can be done over the summer so that it's not disturbing, it doesn't disturb any of the gym classes that you.
Yeah, and we in our committee, in the Facilities Committee, have asked the administration to provide us a kind of full report on the use of the pool and all of the kind of repairs that are needed, and to make sure we've really kind of looked at the whole, the whole system that we're doing, all the upgrades that are necessary, and why. Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to continue with the, going through the consent items. The N five is the Epic Construction Management Contract Extension. And six is the emergent purchases above the bid threshold. Again, these are, Matt, these are related to COVID expenditures.
They are.
Okay. And seven, registration and travel agenda?
Yeah, I got a little one, sorry. Matt, on the sheet, how come the last person, Devin, going to the exact same account is five hundred and six dollars, and everybody else is four hundred and fifty dollars?
I do not, I do not know.
Okay.
Will discuss with, gee, I did not catch that.
Okay.
Four sixteen is a training, so I will, I will ask that question, and then we can amend it if it is truly just an error, which it appears to be.
Thank you.
Okay, and eight, fire and evacuation drills. And then I know we look, the agenda says we will go to consent vote, but I think we should have our public comment before we vote. So if we could do that again, we would have now our second session of public comment. Again, if you would like to comment, please raise your hand and in your screen, and Mr. Bolden will call on you. We'd like to keep our comments to three minutes. If there's anyone out there who'd like to talk to us?
Anyone out there, just raise your hand. I don't see anyone back.
Okay. If not, then we will go on to the consent vote. Could I have a motion, please? Betsy, a second. Jean, thank you. Any discussion? If not, we could call the roll, please.
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Betsy Baglio?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder?
Did we miss Michelle?
Michelle?
She's muted.
Michelle, you're muted.
Sorry, yes.
Peter Katz?
But yes. Yes.
Yes.
Susan Kanter?
Yes.
Bad connection, sorry, bad connection.
Susan, you got, Jean Durbin?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes.
Thank you.
You missed me, Matt. Yes.
I apologize. I can't skip over the Vice President? Daphne Kendall? Apologies.
Oh, no worries, Matt. I just didn't want it to be blank.
I checked you off, so.
Oh, okay. You know, I said the whole meeting, I want to vote.
I believe the consent agenda is passed unanimously. I just, I just want to remind the board, again, we have a meeting on Thursday. This Thursday, we'll see each other again, five to eight, Superintendent Search. We have a meeting next Tuesday. What time is the meeting next Tuesday? Matt, could you confirm that? I don't have it.
Six.
Six? To hear about the budget, talk about parameters, budget. And on the ninth, next Tuesday, Tuesday, the ninth of February, at seven PM, is a public budget workshop, and we invite the members of the public to come in and hear about the budget. Does anyone else have anything? Betsy?
I have two very quick things. One is, members of the public have asked me about our school calendar for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, which sounds like the future, but it's actually only about eight months away. I know our administrators are working on that. That comes to the board typically for two readings, so look for that soon, just to let people know that is something being worked on. Also, I would just encourage my, my fellow colleagues, committee chairs, it's really helpful for the public if agendas are posted to the website on the calendar link before every public meeting. So if you're hosting a meeting that is open to the public, I just encourage for consistency that we all make sure those agendas go on the website. Thanks.
Brian, you had something?
Yeah, just, I guess, scheduling. So we next meet in a regular board meeting on February twenty-third, which I think would be a good time to have more discussion about the capital items that are going out for bid. And then I would just ask the question about Matt's concern about the awards, because the next time we meet as a board in public is the sixteenth of March for the adoption of the budget workshop and tentative adoption of the preliminary budget. And then we do not meet again until March thirtieth. So I just don't want us to find ourselves in the position of not being able to award bids in time to have the work done over the summer.
Thank you for that, Brian.
We have a committee meeting, Operations Committee meeting in the interim, so that we can hopefully work through those bids.
Come up with a timeline.
Yep. Matt, I think Matt's got that.
We have two ahead of the March sixteenth, ideally, especially for HVAC. March sixteenth would be the ideal date to award.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
Just like, on the March sixteenth, are we allowed to conduct any board business in addition to the budget workshop? On February ninth is a budget workshop. I'm sorry, the tentative adoption date. That's a regular board meeting.
Sixteenth.
Yes.
Okay, anything else? If not, thank you, everyone, for your time. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I just, if I could just say, well done, Bob. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
You didn't miss a beat.
No, very nice.
Thank you.
And we're ending by eight forty-five.
Yeah, so I need a motion to dismiss? Dan and Michelle, second. Thank you. All in favor? Okay, I think motion passed unanimous. We are dismissed. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Good night.
Thanks, everybody.